All right. I think we're gonna, uh, we're gonna get started here, so we're gonna start with the invocation, Pastor Charlie.
Greetings, everyone, in Jesus' name. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for another day. We thank you for this meeting. We thank you for everyone here that's here to participate in this agenda. We thank you for just the breath of life. Lord, I ask right now that you bless this meeting, that you bless these leaders, that you give them the, the right mindset so that they can work unified and, and build and in processes and create open doors and resources for this community that will affect everyone in a, in a great and a mighty way. Lord, I pray for the, the moral and the, the ethics of our communities to, to bless our minds, that we can evolve in a way that brings higher standards, that create a higher education systems for us, that we reach the, the youth of this community in, in a stronger way, that we're able to get them to, to adapt to a, a new culture of growing our community and developing leaders in this city. Lord, I ask right now that you, uh, put a hedge around our first responders, that you protect our police officers, that you protect our firemen, that you protect, uh, our, our doctors and, and all our city workers, and, and you keep a hedge around them. Lord, I pray for just the protection of our community, that we are able to live in peace and that we're able to bring new things, and you do a new thing in this city, God, so that we can grow and, and multiply. I pray for jobs, I pray for all kinds of resources that you can provide, and that only you can do, and I pray that in the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen.
All right. It is 6:03, we'll call the meeting to order, and if we could start with the pledge of allegiance, and welcome back, Chief Breezy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and let's start with the roll call. Here. All right, we have a quorum. So let's move into, uh, item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda submitted? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the, the agenda.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. All right, let's move into item number five, presentations. Want me to just transfer down there? All right. Perfect. All right, don't be shy, come on in. All right, so I'm gonna start with, uh, a certificate of recognition, um, and this is for one of our, our employees, this is for Anthony Butch Terranova, is Anthony here? No? Okay. Um, and does, is anybody here on his behalf to accept this? No? Anyone? No? Okay. All right, so this is for Anthony Butch Terranova, Foreman, Public Works, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Los Banos, and for being named Employee of the Month for February 2023, so we'll make sure Anthony gets this, congratulations. All right, now, this is the fun part of my job, and I see a bunch of wrestlers with a bunch of medals, which is even cooler than what I expected to see today, so, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call some people down here one by one, so first, can I have Brockton Borelli come down here? All right, you look like you need a chiropractor after carrying all that metal, but that's all right. All right, Brockton, so, Los Banos High School Wrestling Team, in recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for placing champion in the San Joaquin, Sac Joaquin Men's and Women's Masters Tournament and qualifying for state champion, I wanna, I wanna congratulate you, so. Yes. Wanna hold it up? All right. You can, you can hang out over here, I think, I'm, I'm pretty sure they want to do a group, a group photo. Next up is Larry Borelli. All right, Larry, in recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for placing champion in the Sac Joaquin Men's and Women's Masters Tournament and qualifying for state champion, I wanna congratulate you. Congratulations. I don't know which phone to look at or camera, but, uh. All right, next up is Raymond Fernandez. All right, Raymond, in recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for placing third in the Sac Joaquin Men's and Women's Masters Tournament and qualifying for state championship, congratulations. All right, next, Kiara Daniels. All right, Kiara, in recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for placing third in the Sac Joaquin Men's and Women's Masters Tournament and qualifying for state championship, congratulations. All right, Michaela Mendoza. In recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for placing seventh in the Sac Joaquin Men's and Women's Masters Tournament, congratulations. And Crystal Hernandez. All right, Crystal, in recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for placing eighth in the Sac Joaquin Men's and Women's Masters Tournament, congratulations. Um, and, and again, I got an email about this, um, and, you know, to members of the community and parents and, and sports youth organization, please, keep sending me these emails, because this is what I wanna do, I wanna get these kids up here and recognize them, um, not just for your outstanding work, but the way you represent our city, so because of that, thank you very much, so, congratulations. They gotta pretend like they like each other for a minute. All right, thank you, congratulations again. All right. Did you have something? No? Oh, it's still on, okay, I'm sorry. All right, moving on to item six, the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chambers information table on the back. At this time, I'd like the public, invite the public to come forward and speak, and just as a reminder, please silence or turn off your phones.
Hello, my name is Shandra Lewis, and I'm the manager of Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park in Los Banos. Um, thank you for removing the homeless from behind there and, and taking down the encampment, I appreciate that. We feel safer with that gone, but there is one concern. I know the gentleman that's in the middle of the field, he wasn't in the encampment, so that concerns me that you will allow them to come back, 'cause you didn't remove him. And I, I've been told by one of your councilmen, he's a very dangerous gentleman, so that's my only concern left, is that we appreciate all that you've done, and, uh, we've, uh, at Rancho Los Banos have dealt with them for the three years, um, or longer now, but I appreciate you doing that, but our concern is that gentleman, and that he will attract them to come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carol Etchberry, and I spoke here in July, I think it was, when we were having the city planning issues and the dismissal of Josh. Most people come to complain, I came to applaud you for doing the right thing, bringing Josh back, I think what he had laid out for the city and what you guys felt that it was his need to come back for the city's health and getting things moving, and I just want to applaud you for doing that, and it's always easy to come up here and complain, but a lot of people don't come up and, and say thank you for, for doing that, so I would just wanted to let you know that I appreciate it, and hopefully Josh has got a lot of work to do with you guys, and hopefully it all falls into place. Thank you.
Mayor and council members, my name's Michael Hughes, I'm the commander of the VFW here in Los Banos, and I'd like to, um, let you know about our honor flight drive-through dinner that we have with the FFA kids, the Ag boosters and the veterans, the American Legion and VFW. Tickets are $10 apiece, all proceeds from this, we've had, everything is, is being donated for the dinner, all the proceeds go to the honor flight, the Central Valley Honor Flight. Uh, to date, we have given $125,000 to the honor flight, this is, I believe, our fifth year of doing this, so, tickets are available, $10 apiece, great dinner, uh, come and join us, it'll be at the DES on, uh, the 15th from four to seven, and you'll see a whole bunch of old veterans and a whole bunch of young kids getting together and making something happen for the betterment of, uh, of our community and, uh, everything else, this started when a group of FFA kids went to Washington and met up with a bunch of veterans at the memorials, came back and, uh, talked to us and wanted to know, hey, would we help them to do this, and we've been doing it for five years, and it's a great benefit, I have tickets, all the FFA kids have tickets, all the veterans have tickets, so buy tickets and, uh, come and enjoy the, uh, the pasta dinner, and I, uh, thank you, all, all of you, for all the support that you've given to the veterans through the years, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Blanche, and I'm with the Elks. Um, just to let you know that, uh, May Day, of course, is coming soon, and the Elks will have a booth there, all the proceeds will go to our scholarship foundation, we collect throughout the year, and just so you can know, the Elks National Foundation, when we pull all of our money together for also scholarships, uh, we are second to the United States Government in donation to scholarships for our youth, especially our local youth, but just a little bit of history, in 1890, the May Day Fair first started, and that was with Henry Miller celebrating the railroad. It was such a big thing and so successful that he decided to carry it on, and it got carried on till his death in 1916, and other groups worked in order to keep it alive. In 1938, the native daughters, the native sons took on carrying on this task, and it even grew to such a success that they actually ended up always celebrating downtown, the parade went downtown, and then went to the front doors of the May Day Fair gate. They were actually, back in the day, they were only second to the Rose, uh, the Rose Parade, um, was our Los Banos May Day Fair, and, um, participants celebrated downtown, there was events downtown, the parades, there was three of them, there was even one kitty parade, and there was something so beautiful for people to parade through, to celebrate downtown, to parade north, um, to those front gates on Fourth Street, so, um, let's keep on keeping on, and maybe, uh, we could come up with a celebration downtown, um, with the theme, with windows, and carry on that way. Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Soares, um, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just too want to commend you for bringing back our city manager, I'm excited to see Josh back up there, I think it's where he needs to be, and I'm excited for the future of Los Banos, so thank you.
All right, any, anyone else? Good evening, council and, uh, staff, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here, I'm Tony Whitehurst, representing the Chamber of Commerce, um, and, uh, have with me, uh, Roy Todd, who's also very active and supportive in the, the Chamber of Commerce. We have some statistics and a little report on our, our monthly activities, but, um, before I let, uh, Roy do that, I would like to thank the council for, and staff as well, for their continued support, um, and partnership with the chamber in, in attempting to, um, make the business community in Los Banos a more welcome environment for, for restoring building businesses that have been, um, have been hit hard by COVID, um, much like the chamber has as well. As our members do get affected by it, we directly feel it, however, uh, with your understanding and participation, we are actively pursuing a series of, a series of agreements and commitments we've made to the city to, to, uh, restore that strength in our existing businesses and to attract new businesses, uh, to Los Banos. It's succeeding, and with your help and your partnership, we will continue, uh, to, to devote our entire, uh, business and our entire effort to continuing to improve the business environment for Los Banos, to bring new businesses into Los Banos, and to see, uh, to see our community economy thrive again. And also, I'd like to continue your presence and continue asking you, inviting you to participate in our activities, um, because the businesses in town and new businesses respond so positively to know that our council and our council, city staff are so supportive of their, of their coming here and their, and their survival and success here, so, uh, please continue, we have, uh, events coming up, which, which, uh, Roy will mention, but, um, we'd love having you a part of it, and we're looking forward to being continued parts of that partnership, so, thank you all once again.
All right, hi, everyone, uh, thank you, Tony. Uh, I've been ready for this, uh, particular, uh, city council meeting, I went back and looked at some minutes from, uh, February 2020, we know around March, around this time, uh, basically, we were all locked down due to COVID and so forth and so on, right, so, 'cause I know I had chaired, uh, the crab feet, uh, that was supposed to take place on March 27th for the, uh, for the Rotary Group, and, uh, that got canceled, so you can imagine, then you got to write all the checks back to all the people that bought tickets, so that was fun. So to give you an idea, back in, uh, February 2020, uh, the, the chamber had 253, uh, uh, member count, as of this point, right now, we're at 207, so that's 81% of where, where we were, uh, uh, basically right when COVID hit, uh, so we're efforting to try to recover from all those kinds of things, uh, so to give you a few metrics that you might be interested in, we had, uh, we've, since, uh, January 1, we've added 11 new members, and we've had, uh, 20 renewals since, uh, January 1, so that's a good thing. Upcoming events, we have the Spring Fair in April, uh, of course, we'll participate in, uh, the May Day, uh, we have Dad's Day Out Car Show, which I'm, uh, getting the opportunity to chair this year, uh, and then July, we have the Tomato Festival, September, uh, we have a Fall Street Fair, uh, October 27th, uh, is, uh, the Trunk or Tree, which was very well-attended, uh, last year, so it's the second annual, we'll call it, and then on December 2nd, we have, uh, the Annual Christmas Parade and Tree Lighting. Uh, the one thing we did add to the schedule that wasn't previously there is a Mother's Day in the Park, which will happen in, uh, Pacheco Park, however, this time around, it'll be a one-day event, not a, not a two-day event as it was, uh, last time. Uh, the other thing is new members, uh, the, uh, the new IHOP, you may be familiar with, uh, they've, they've, uh, agreed to, uh, join the chamber, and then also Gene Brandy Epiaries, I guess that's beekeepers, right? See, it might be a city slicker, but, yeah, I, I learned, okay. Uh, and, uh, so they've, they've joined, and then I also have one that I'm working on currently that I believe is going to hit, and it might, uh, might be a very impressive one at that. Unfortunately, we weren't able to pull off, uh, a mixer, uh, here in February, uh, through a couple of scheduling things, but, uh, March, uh, we're gonna double down, we have a Guild Mortgage with, uh, Tanya Price on March 23rd at 5:30, and then on March 30th, we'll have Valley Springs, uh, Memory Care, and, uh, we have a ribbon cutting for an individual you might be familiar with, uh, there's Biggins Texas Barbecue, uh, ownership of Ken Lambert, he's gonna have, uh, March 11th, 2023, at 10 a.m., at his new location, 609 I Street here in Los Banos, so we look forward to that. 18th now? Okay. All right, 18th, all right. right. Let's see. Anything else? I think that pretty much covers it. We look forward to participating going forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? No? All right. I'll ask our city clerk, do we have any write-in comments?
Mayor, council members, and general public, I would like to take the time to formally introduce myself. My name is Elizabeth Benavides. I am the Executive Director for Agapi Community Transitional Services Foundation, ACTS Foundation, a California 501(c)(3) improving low-income and houseless communities established in the great city of Los Banos. I look forward to working with our at-need population just as much as I do working alongside our city officials, general public, and service providers, as these types of services require all of our participation. At ACTS Foundation, our aim is to assist communities, low-income and homeless residents with housing services, advocacy, and other assistance to improve their lives and the community, eliminate poverty in the country, in the county, through individual and organizational dedication, collaboration, and innovation, assist with safe and affordable housing in the county, have programs in the county with emergency shelter, warming shelter, permanent housing, and confidential housing, provide weekly case management, counseling, legal advocacy, and support, continuing education and job training, link participants to community resources, to serve, advocate, collaborate for those in need by developing innovative strategies for self-empowerment to all participants, provide a foundation of skills, learning, and support for participants to achieve independence. Personal background: serving low-income and houseless communities for 25 years, piloting the local non-congregate shelter on East Pacheco Boulevard, known as Project Roomkey. Project saw a rapid success rate and was extended from three months to one year. Project garnered financial support from the City of Los Banos to carry the project to October 31, 2022. Project permanently housed 47 of 57 persons served on site, leading Governor Newsom's 100-day challenge focusing on the encampment for Los Banos, hitting the projected target of permanently housing 20 persons in 100 days and sheltering 65 persons of a targeted 25 in 100 days, coaching the countywide Governor's Newsom's 100-day challenge addressing homelessness affecting children and youth and their families, exceeding their projected target, a total of 116 children and hundreds more adults. ACTS Foundation looks forward to collaborating with you all. Thank you for allowing me to share my heart. Of course, thank you for your time. Best regards, Elizabeth Benavides, Executive Director, ACTS Foundation. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. All right. So moving on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed by, from the consent agenda by a city council member. And we only have one item?
The only item is warrant listings for 237, 331 through 237, 695, in the amount of $4,669,704. And the item is to be approved as submitted.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing no opposed, item passes. We'll move into item eight, consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6609, amending Division IV salary schedule employee classifications related to changes to Section A, administration and Section C, community and economic development. This was previously continued from the February 1 meeting and February 15 council meetings, and is now scheduled to be continued to the March 15 council meeting. And again, this is due to the increased scope of the review to include additional postings and information from the interim finance director is going to address during the budget process. So do I need to make a motion to just? Does our finance, interim finance director want to make a statement on this?
So, as I was looking through the structure of salaries and management, was realizing that there's some more issues to deal with. So the scope expanded in this activity, this investigation. And so in order to bring really an adequate picture and a fair picture to all of the mid-management, upper mid-management of people that are unrepresented, we're going through the process of changing it structurally and then presenting this during the budget process. So it's a little bit easier to have the time to explain these things. And one also to ensure that these positions, as they change in amounts and costs of the city, that we are certain that the budget impact will be presented clearly during that time period across the board. So I hope, I don't really think that this is going to be a standalone item going forward, but it'll be an item that will address all unrepresented management. So that's kind of where we are now.
Okay. And that's, again, scheduled to continue?
Yes. And the budget process starts in April and through meetings. So that will be a standalone item within the budget discussions.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move the item forward. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I just want to make it clear, from my understanding, we have two positions here on this agenda that's being questioned and in evaluation. Now we're bringing in other mid-management. The thing I want to make sure of is that these two positions, which were the ones, and I know that it's been stated up here, it's about the position. It's not only about the position, but it's about two women who were underpaid in their positions within the city, that we address those two positions and not try to cloud it in with every, you know, all the other positions that are mid-management within our city. So when it comes back on March 15, are you going to be addressing these two positions? I know you're talking about addressing them in the budget, but I don't want it to get lost and off track, that we're doing something other than what we originally wanted to do here.
These two positions will be addressed, yes. And my goal is not to continue this to the next meeting, but to actually continue it to the budget season, which would be after this. I have not put this by the wayside. It's just an overall expansion of the positions themselves. So I'm purely looking at this from the way the salary is structured by position, not necessarily by gender. So
But that was part of the problem with gender. And I don't want that to be left out.
No, it is not. But I'm being, my approach to this is gender neutral, to be honest. And, you know, so I'm looking at the value of the position, the job responsibilities of the position, how it fits within the management structure of people of like responsibilities. So that's what I'm going to bring to you, and it's what I've always brought to you. You know, so I had to continue this because of the fact that looking from the prospect of unrepresented people, not getting their fair amount of salary based upon their responsibilities, was something that came up during this process. So I don't know if I'm answering your question.
And I understand that you're trying to bring it to a level where these two employees should be paid.
Yes, based upon their job requirements, right.
Based on your evaluation and seeking out other information.
Right.
But I just, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be lost in the process of just kind of putting it in the budget. And nothing's being brought forward to this council to tell us why these two positions have been underpaid for so long.
No. So there will be an explanation as to the process, the data behind it, all of the things that are required in order to make a proper decision on a salary schedule. So it won't just be the existing salary of the person. It's going to be the range of the position. And that's what I started with these two positions and needed to go back, after speaking with other people within the city, that there was another need, another layer to go through and make sure that the compaction or the way the position is structured, the responsibility of that position is all compensated as a basis of two things. There's an internal process and there's an external market process. So I'm looking at both of these from the position, not the individual.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, yeah, and again, we're just going to continue the item. We're not going to beat a dead horse. It's obvious that there are positions that are underpaid, and the market value has changed, and that goes across, I mean, to the city. We're not, you know, the positions themselves, what's important is that people are paid properly. And we get to that.
Yeah. So I want to ensure that this is not continued to the 15th, but, yeah, it'll be discussed back at the budget. So that's, I think, the
Gotcha. Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Turn my microphone off. All right. So let's go to item nine, which is advisement of public notices. I understand we don't have any. That makes it simple. And item 10, let's go to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excited to be back. Thank you, folks, for all your support, all your words of encouragement. For those of you that are here, thank you. I really appreciate it. For those of you that aren't here, thank you so much for your words of encouragement and support. Appreciate it. I'm excited to be here. Worked very hard for the city. Thank you to the mayor. Thank you to the council members. I appreciate your support. And thank you to staff for all your hard work and continue to make me better. I appreciate it. And folks in the community need your help, need your support, so we can continue to make Los Banos a great place to be. Also, we'd like to mention, on the east side of town, we have a new digital sign that just got put up within the past week. If you get a chance, go take a look at it. Looks really good. We have one on the west side of town, but we have a new one on the east side of town that we put in the budget and got erected within this past week. So that fell into the direction of Stacy, Susan, and her team. So great job on that. So I appreciate it. Thank you, folks.
All right. All right. Let's move on to item 11, report update Merced County Association Governments, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy, PC, Measure V Committee, and San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement, the LB, the P bid. So for this, we'll start with Councilmember Lewis. Do you want to start with the San Joaquin?
Oh, okay. All right. Yes, sir. Yes. Just a short report that we were working on, money had come from CARB, which is the California Air Resources Board. There were leftover fundings within the budget of the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control Board District. And most of our large farmers have been getting money to redirect them from burning their clippings from their orchards and grapevines, because effective January 1, 2025, in the state of California, no farmer will be able to burn anything. But what we saw was a disparity for our small farmers who were not being able, were not able to participate in this process, because the money was going to mostly the large farmers. So we redirected funds that were left over to help farmers who were 100 acres or less to have access for alternative ways of burning, of dealing with their clippings from their trees and their cuttings, and also for monies to help them buy new tractors, which are electric tractors, moving from combustion to electricity. So that was our major discussion at the board, at the last board meeting. And, you know, we're very mindful that, you know, with all the regulations coming down from the state of California, that money has to be fairly distributed to everybody to have access to. That's it today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. And the next MCAG meeting is in the middle of March. So I don't have anything to report on MCAG. Do we have anything for the downtown?
Not the new for the downtown.
Okay. All right. So now we'll move to item 12, city council member reports. We'll start with Councilmember Begonia.
So I had the opportunity to go to the firehouse and have a pancake breakfast Saturday morning, which is awesome. I took my nephew. Was that the first annual or first time you did that?
Yeah, that was our first annual one. So we're a great PR event.
Arbor Day, there's Arbor Day Pancake Breakfast Friday morning. I'll try to get that before work, 7 o'clock to 10. So trying to get to all the pancake breakfasts I can. But that's it.
All right. I too. I did the pancake thing. Yes. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I'd like to welcome back our city manager. We lost a lot of great momentum while you were away, but we cannot thank you enough for coming back in to help this town we all call home. So thank you. That is it.
Councilmember Lewis, do you want to have a separate report?
Yes, I would. I think at our last two meetings, we were told that we'd be getting an update on public, from Public Works, on the status of our cleanup for the CCID canal, and also the costs incurred to do that. I know that our public director has not been available here at our last couple of meetings, but I would like to see that scheduled on the agenda again, as soon as he's available to come back to our meetings. I think it's important for us as a council to know what's going on, as well as our public, who have any questions. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to congratulate, thank, you know, kind of happy to have our city manager back in here. And just want to say, it's time to start thinking positive now for our city, looking forward. We got a full staff up here. We got our city manager now. We need to start focusing now for the city of Los Banos and start making positive, not only thoughts, but positive things going forward from here. And that's basically all I have to say. So appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And I'll go last. So again, yes, I want to welcome back Mr. Pernaro as our city manager. I'm excited, because now I think it's time that we get stuff done. And the public needs to hold us accountable to get those things done. And so I'm looking forward to kind of being under the gun a little bit. I don't know, maybe I'm weird and I like pressure, but definitely looking forward to getting things done. We've already had some conversations. One of the things that I've kind of just been working on the side, I had a great meeting with the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Merced County, and we had the discussion about bringing a brick-and-mortar facility to Los Banos for boys and girls. And so I'm going to meet with her again and talk about what the city can do to hopefully help that. I know we have a very large commuter base, and parents aren't home, and anything, any resources, we can help give those parents, so the kids have something to do and, you know, create some accountability for them in their off time. It would greatly help out with everybody. And so I'm looking forward to working with her on that. Just meeting after meeting after meeting. And if anybody, again, wants to meet me, talk to me, I'm available. I make myself available on Fridays here in the council at City Hall. So if anybody wants a meeting, please schedule with me. I'm happy to hear from anyone. And again, you know, the five of us aren't going to agree on every single thing from here on out, and that's okay. But just now, I think it's time for us to actually bring some unity to this board and to this city and get stuff done. So we're looking to put out the small fires we can, but then work on the big projects. So I'm excited to work with Josh on things like the homeless and the animal shelter. Those are my two big ones right now. And then, of course, you know, sports and youth and pickleball and things like that as well. So that's pretty much it for me. And man, 40, 45 minutes for a council meeting. That's, I'm pretty proud of that, too. So at this time, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second the motion.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Meeting adjourned 6:43.